Welcome to the first meeting of the school year and please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amy, would you take roll call, please?
Mrs. Talby?
Here.
Mr. Gilbert?
Here.
Mr. Detzl?
Here.
Mr. Heather?
Here.
Mr. Tietzort?
Here.
We'd like to start our meeting with the reading of our mission statement. The Northwest Local School District will create a responsive learning community where all students are valued, challenged, and guided along a pathway to success. And we need to approve tonight's agenda, so I need a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Where'd it go?
I don't know what happened to it. It went away when I hit vote.
I voted.
I did too.
Okay. Is it yours?
Mine kicked next to 5.1 annual budget document presentation. There it is.
There we go.
I'll do it again.
It looks like Chris did not.
Yeah, I voted twice.
There you go.
Don't say that to him.
It's really, he's really excited about the agenda.
He shouldn't.
Sorry about that.
He likes that agenda.
Alright, so tonight we're gonna start with two presentations. The first one is one that Amy and I are gonna share with the board and the public around an annual budget doc that we've been working on. So this is a project that has been over a year in the process of making, probably about a year and a half, almost two years now. So it's been a long process to get to this point where we can share this. So we're excited to be able to offer this amount of transparency to our community, so... So this journey for us started actually in 2017 as a district. We joined the government office of, of government finance office of accountabilities process for best practice in school budgeting. And so we have been working through a lot of internal work to really learn, reflect, and grow around these areas since 2017. Part of that is about how we align our fiscal resources to our instructional priorities and align everything to our strategic plan so we can begin to measure our return on investment. The annual budget doc that we are going to preview tonight and then we'll launch live in the next couple of weeks is really a policy document that outlines for the community a lot of our fiscal policies that guide and kind of give us our sandbox around what we can and can't do with the money. An operations guide that really shows how we operationalize the policy into the day-to-day operations of the district, our financial plan, and as a communication tool to really show how we're communicating not just the finances of the district, but the alignment of the finances to our instructional priorities and the academic outcomes from that alignment.
So as part of our strategic plan, financial stability is one of our key pillars. And so in our strategic plan, our goal statement says we want to create a stronger foundation of financial stability that ensures an optimal learning experience for all. And in our strategic plan, we have specific objectives that we want to achieve. The first is two-way communications to help our community understand how our schools are funded, how we utilize our funds, what we're spending our funds on, and the needs of our school district, as well as how we are aligning our financial resources to our instructional priorities. And then we continue to partner with our community on that transparent funding cycle. So we've talked about that five-year rolling five mil operating levy cycle. But this annual budget document also outlines our instructional priorities in that it tells our community not only where we've been, but where we currently are and where we are going because we believe that what is measured gets achieved. And so some key takeaways that we want our community to have when they're, as they're reading through this document and to understand is again, how we allocate our, our funding and how we spend the allocation that we receive on our instructional priorities, that we do make sure that at least 70% of our budget is spent on our instruction and no more than 10% is spent on administration, that we have long-term financial health goals and we have that ongoing operating levy cycle that we do monitor and that we do measure to improve three key areas in our district for instructional priorities.
So as a district, we have a plan that is submitted to the state every three years. And so we are in that three-year cycle. We're going into our third year of this plan that was submitted the year prior to that third year, that, the three years. So you plan it and then you implement it for three years. So we have three areas that are kind of our high-level district area goals and then all buildings feed into that with how they kind of build on those goals and they play their part to really make sure that the bigger goals are met. So it's a hierarchy. The first one is about graduation rate and aiming for a 95% graduation rate. That is not just a responsibility to high schools, but our elementaries and middle schools see pathways for them to be part of that solution to make sure that we attain that 95% graduation rate. We have one around proficiency that would be 70% benchmark for all of our state tests and looking at our progress measure on our report card with a four-star rating or higher. There are other parts of the report card that we will talk about when it is released this fall, but these are two key areas that have been part of our three-year plan. And then the last part is culture and climate around discipline, that we make sure that we are enforcing our code of conduct to ensure that students are following that and that through proactive strategies, we're gonna see a reduction in the out-of-school discipline occurrences to make, make sure that students are in-school learning. This does not mean that we are reducing our expectations, but we are increasing our expectations to make sure that students are meeting that and therefore not having a need to have a discipline occurrence. Every building will have their own section of this document and it will look a little bit like this as an intro. It will share what the building is going to do in order to meet their goals so that the district can meet their goals. And in this, our community will be able to see the specific goals each building has made in those areas and it will show their progress from 21, 22, 22, 23, and 23, 24. This is always gonna be in the rear. This is a planning document, so this is meant to be brought out in June as budgets are being finalized for the upcoming year. Data for our report card is not out until September, October. And so there's always gonna be a lag between what we're planning for and what the data says when we get to that point. So that's why we have a cycle of this document coming out as a planning doc. We have our state of the district about where we were for that previous year. We have our five-year forecast that we share. We have our CAFR and PAFR that we send out that shows the actual expenditures of the districts. We have a pattern of communication that shows planning through execution. So this will be part of the document to kind of outline for the community every building's responsibility and commitment to their growth measures as well.
And then because it is an annual budget document, this budget document will be for fiscal year 24, which is what we're currently in, but as Darryl just said, ideally we would release this around June, so it's before the fiscal year starts in July. And it will indicate our priorities as well as our expenses based on building and department all the way up to district level. 80% of our budget is in personnel costs, so our staffing plan, our district staffing plan is part of this report. It'll list the positions that we have. It will also show the average salaries by position as well as the fringe benefits on those salaries and the weighted average benefit costs, so insurance costs related to each position. So it's not by person, it's by position. There's also a table of contents within the document that is hyperlink that can take anybody to any section of the document that they wish to go. And this is an example of what the budget page will look like per building or department. At the top, it lists the staffing plan, administrative, instructional, support services, operational. And at the bottom is the additional budgets in addition to not only the personnel, but also the building budget, the district budgets for that building or department and grant funds related to also servicing that building or department with the total cost at the bottom of the projected budget for each building and department throughout the district. So we do recognize that strong schools are built on a stable financial foundation and the financial stability allows us to have stronger academic programs.
And that our commitment is to continue to focus on that strong financial foundation through strategic planning, through alignment, to make sure that we create optimal learning experiences for all kid, but making sure that we do that through a very strategic, long-term, and cohesive plan.
As Darryl mentioned, we've been working on this since 2017 internally, working through our processes and procedures and getting everything aligned and looking forward into the future and having long-term vision and plans. And now we're ready to release it to our community of this is where we are, this is where we're going, and this is how we do monitor and measure.
Any questions?
Is this a document that is the state requires or that you would upload anywhere in the state to be compared to other districts or how does it compare?
No, it's not a state document. It's actually nationally through GFOA. And very few schools, even cities, townships, villages utilize this document or provide this information out to their public. We are trying to be transparent and make sure that we address our commitment in having that transparency and communication with our community so they do understand how we are funded and how we utilize our funds and what our new needs are to operate our district. So there's nowhere to load it into. There is a GFOA where we can send it to there to be like graded and things, but what we did was we didn't go as like the CAFR is, so it's in detail just numbers. We tried to bring it back down to operational and for our community that we could build on going forward and maybe make more technical and in-depth, but we wanted to start lower level and more basic with here's our staffing plan, this is where our dollars go and keep it from, from like the CAFR that comes out at the end of the year, which is more just financial related in notes and maybe not user-friendly.
We also wanted to make sure that we could communicate that we do have goals that we are tracking and monitoring on an ongoing basis and we are aligning. So a lot of the processes we have in place around data that, you know, parents might see my kids taking assessments, well, the assessments feed up into a system that helps us track whether or not we are on track or not to meet our goals. So we've worked really hard to streamline and be strategic to make sure data points connect so that we can be proactive and have the data that aligns, that measures, and that is predictable. And so this is a way to show our community that we, we do have goals, we do track those goals, we do monitor our progress, and we do align it not only to our progress, but to our finances.
So it's this year and then would it be three years before the next one or just each year?
Annually. So the budget report would come out annually. We, as a board, you approve our budget in May?
Yeah.
And we would want to release this in June.
But the goals and the...
The goals are three-year goals because those are required by the state.
Okay.
And then we will update those because we're in year three of our plan. So we'll be updating that this year and then submitting a new plan to the state for the next three years.
Okay. And then would you, are there gonna be comparisons from the previous year of this document? Like you've done with the report cards and things?
Yeah, so the charts in here will show the three years. So you'll be able to see data from year one, year two, and then eventually year three, so it'll all be there so you can see the progression.
One more question. The, the building goals that you talked about, will I'm sure each building then be assisting with developing what their goals are?
Yeah, so they are already developed and they're in there, in the documents. We have district goals and then the buildings develop their goals to feed into the district goal, so it's all aligned. And then that's what each building is reported here on their specific progress on the goals that lead into the district goal. So it's all in that one document.
Thank you, guys.
And how would this be communicated to the public? Obviously website, but...
Yeah, so it would be a hyperlink document. We'll share it through our communication processes with our staff and our parents and then through a press release and our website for people who may not be connected to our communication.
And then a community newsletter.
Is there any thought about maybe having like a forum where people, you can walk community members through that so that they can ask questions while it's going on?
Do we know this? And to comment on that, I hope we get to the point where we do have people that are looking at it and asking questions and having that level of engagement that those meetings would be well-attended, so definitely something to work toward.
You can review books at the same time, get some people in here. Thank you.
Thanks. Alright, and next we have a second special presentation we have with us tonight. Our transportation supervisor, Yolanda Palmer, and we have our assistant supervisors, Tanya Henry and Brian Redden, and they are here to give updates about transportation. So without further ado, I'll turn it over to the three of them.
Good evening.
I'm Brian Redden. I'm assistant supervisor of transportation. Engagement process, we engage our community to look at options in order to reduce the number of routes needed, which more closely match your current staffing levels and to reduce and eliminate bus cancellations. We all hate bus cancellations. Option one was to make no changes and continue with the cancellations. Just wasn't gonna happen. Number, option two was to extend the not-eligible zone up to two miles. It's currently one mile. Option three was to create a four-tier system to help reduce routes. However, this option, it drastically changed school times. So option four was to route as efficiently as possible, consolidate bus stops, which required some students to walk further to their bus stops. This option was also kept the school times very close to the previous years. Option four was created in response to the other three options. Transportation laws and policy. Board of Education Policy 8600, transportation. We transport students outside of one mile from the school of residence for K through H students. This is above and beyond the state allowable distance of two, two miles. Ohio Administrative Code Rule 3301-8313 for school bus routes and stops. The designated school bus stops are board-approved on a yearly basis. The school bus stop locations, pupils in grades kindergarten through eighth may be required to walk up one-half of a mile to their designated stop. I think we've looked at a lot of our stops that we have now and I think we're all bus drivers, so we, we understand and I don't think any of them are even more than a quarter of a mile. I really don't. Well, there's one or two. Ohio Administrative Code 3301-8313, school bus stop, routes and stops. School bus stop location, school bus stop locations shall provide the maximum safety for pupils considering the distance from residence, traffic volume, physical characteristics, visibility, and weather conditions. Each pupil shall be assigned a designated place of safety on a resident's side of the road in which the vehicle is scheduled to stop. Any questions?
Not yet. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Yolanda Palmer, the transportation supervisor, and I'm gonna talk about some of the changes that occurred for 23, 24 school year. We changed some bell times. The middle school was changed to end at, well, start at 7:15, end at 2:05. Our second tiers, which is Struble and P R E, they started 8:05 and ended 2:45. And some of our third-tier schools, Colrain, Monford Heights, and Taylor, they start at 8:50 and end at 3:30. And our Houston preschool, the time stayed for them. There was no changes to that. Routes and stops, in order to make, in order to more clearly match our current staffing, the student's walkout distance was increased to the state maximum of a half a mile. The reduced number of routes this year, we went from 73 to 58 routes. There's 45 regular, 13 sped, seven van routes. We travel over 5,706 miles per day. There's 411 bus stops. And we transport over 5,000 students daily. Bus expectations. Chapter 3301-83, which is the Ohio Administrative Code, contains operation and safety rules for the student's transportation while on the bus. And these are rules that we have placed on the bus and these are ones that we enforce as well. Bus stop locations. Each student is assigned a bus stop location. They are expected to be there five minutes before their scheduled arrival time of the bus. By, by the state of Ohio law, kindergartens through eighth grade may be required to travel up to a half a mile to a bus stop. The max, and this is for us to ensure that their safety is maximized, the distance from the residence and the traffic, traffic and value, traffic volume and the visibility and the physical characteristics of the bus stop as well is observed into the safety of it. Sitting in a seat on the bus, all students are required to sit on this, sit in a seat. We asked that they keep their feet on the floor, they're back to the back, bottom on the bottom. And I used to sing a song, feet on the floor, back to the back, bottom on the bottom, facing forward. And that's how my students on the bus learned how to sit properly in their seat because that seat in front of them acts as a barrier. The place of safety, this is one of our biggest issues that we have. And we ask parents to assist us with helping us to ensure that your child is safe. In the mornings, they are at the place of safety where the bus driver has deemed or designated, which is away from the bus stop. The, in the mornings, they're at the bus stop. Their place of safety falls into place more or less in the afternoons when they get off the bus. The bus driver has designated a place. We ask that they remain there until the bus has passed them. We ask parents not to ask the little kids to come across the street because this is putting them in danger. So the place of safety is in place for their protection. And we just ask for cooperation in that. It's new to people, even though it's been in place for many years. It's supposed to be something that every bus driver instills, is a place of safety. And it's just for each student's safety. That's why we ask that they remain there and parents don't interfere with that.
Yolanda, before you move on, the board will remember that place of safety was added to our student code of conduct, so it's one of the things that when a bus driver is writing a student up, they can choose that as a violation so that we can track the things that are specific to transportation instead of just general codes. So that was added to our code of conduct this year so we can more clearly communicate the issues that we might be having.
That is correct. And hand signals. The driver provides hand signals for the students to board the bus or get off the bus. And that again is where we ask the parents to allow the bus drivers to do their job and safely get the kids on and off the bus. The danger zone, danger zone is 10 feet around the bus and that's why it's so important for the student to be in their place of safety, not run into the bus when the bus gets there because of the 10-feet radius around the bus, which creates danger. Most of the accidents and fatalities that's occurred has happened within the 10-feet of the bus in the danger zone. So that's why the bus, the place of safety is so important for students to be in. Bus expectations. Building administrators will be boarding the bus every week, at least once a week, to enforce the expectations. The drivers are required to notify building administration of misconduct and they are to use bus referral, which is done online. The student bus discipline, which is also inside of the student code of conduct, has been changed. We are looking at this, or the stu, the schools are looking at discipline a lot closer. Suspension of bus and riding transportation privileges could be revoked if there is a continual pattern and that is not something that the transportation department issues out. This is done through the school. So we've made some changes to a lot of bus stops this year and this is one of the examples where we've, we placed a bus stop where we thought was best, but after we got a few calls from parents, we went out and physically looked at the bus stop. So the, the example number one, the stop was changed for safety. A parent called concerned about the safety of the stop location. The stop is located in the middle of a hill. They asked to be moved to the next corner street as it would be safer to drive them to the stop, both for the safety of the student and for the bus. And this is a picture. The first one is a curve that's within the hill. The second one is part of the hill as well as the third one. And this does not give a clear visibility for the bus. For motorists, they wouldn't see the bus. And for the bus itself, they wouldn't see motorists approaching because of the way the hill is. So we made a correction and we moved the bus stop to a flatter surface where it's visible for the bus driver to see in all directions. The next example is a student lives outside of the busing area for the particular school that they attend. A bus stop was created in years past to accommodate, which is a half a mile off the path of the, the bus route. Busing from home address to the nearest school would be 1.1 mile away. The school of choice for this school, this child to attend is 6.8 miles away. So if you look at the blue dot in the left corner, that is the school that is a mile point, 1.1 mile away. The dot in the, next to the blue dot with the red circle is the student's home where she lives. The red kinda X up top is the bus stop that we created, which the student, they could bring the student there and we would bus the student to the school that is 6.8 miles away. The red line that you see is the path that the bus travels. So the, we created a stop that would be a half a mile off the path, but we are willing to do that if the parent chose to bring the bus there, the student there to get on the bus, to take them to that particular school, which is 6.8 miles away versus the one that is 1.1 mile away. So we've made accommodations if they choose to take that. The plan and process.
It's Tanya?
I'm Tanya Henry, assistant supervisor. So the plan, the summer planning, we worked all summer long. Enlisted professional assistants developing new routes based on safety and efficiency. New neighborhood bus stops were created. Students may have to travel up to a half mile to their bus stop location. We took some of the neighborhoods and just condensed some of the stops down. Our drivers were used to drive, provide feedback on routes. They came in for a week. All of them drove, we gave them different routes, not their routes that they were used to driving. We wanted a new look on things. So they drove around, they gave us their feedback. The only little issue we had with that was they can't like the stop that we showed before where I moved a bus stop. They seen the stop, but they don't know what other houses are coming to that stop. That's what made that stop a little bit dangerous. But overall, we were able to get a good feel on what was the best stops. Once they picked their routes, they all come in for a day where they all drive their current routes that they picked, they bid on, gave us some feedback on them if they needed anything. We modified things, make things safer. We are still doing that today, being the first day of school. They will still give us feedback for the next couple of weeks till we nail down their routes for them. Staffing. We've had four hiring fairs over the summer. Brian and I even came in on a Saturday just to do a hiring fair. Tried to target, you know, put it out on social media, Facebook, television, to get more applicants in from all over, not just bus drivers. We need bus aides. We did fill our van drivers. We need everybody. We still need some mechanics. We still need guaranteed sub-drivers. Our substitute bus drivers are what helps us run every single day. Our substitute bus drivers are what helps us run every single day. On August twenty-third, hiring fair here at the District Social Support Office from two to four thirty. We are looking forward to a great year. We've all got a positive outlook. We're really wanting to have a great year. We don't want cancellations. We really don't. I hate cancellations for the passion. We're trying to get the morale back in our department. I've been driving a bus for Northwest for twenty-six years. I love my job. I love being here. I plan on leaving for retirement, you know, in a couple of years. But we had our in-service. I only had four left, and now I have to wait, you know, another five. So, anyway, our district in-service, we also had a department in-service meeting Friday before the district one. We did some games, you know, tried to, everybody come together as a team. Smiles, we seen so many smiles. It was just, it was a great feeling to see everybody come together. We can do this. As a district, as a department, it takes all of us to make it run. This was some, more of the district in-service. And this is our logo. This is how we roll. Every day, this is how we roll. Any questions?
Well, first, thank you. Thank you. Appreciate, I know back when we had the, the meetings with the options laid out for transportation that the community was heard with all of the feedback around school start times changing. And just thank you for thinking outside the box and trying to come up with other solutions and all of the hiring fairs. And the routes changing, just the amount of routes that we're able to save. I, you know, see it every day, walking my son, them to the bus stop, driving the routes and trying to, to fix that. Just really appreciate your guys' effort, and I am also hopeful for a great year. I appreciate the feedback that I've seen from the, the changes and the suggestions that people have put out there. Any questions?
Go ahead, Mark, go ahead.
I believe we did a presentation a couple of years ago, and I think the total mileage for our Transportation Department for a school year was over one point one million miles? Something like that? Just to be incredibly commended that our kids are that safe for a million miles. I mean, just, there's a numbers game associated, right? Statistics that things could happen. And so the safety of our kids, a million miles a year, and we hear virtually nothing. A mailbox here or there, you know, things that we're not that concerned about, honestly. So thank you for that. And we are looking forward to a really good year. I've heard many people say that there's just a different feel, a different vibe. I think last year, you guys took a beating. I mean, it was, and, and we appreciate you hanging in there. I mean, Darryl can attend. We, when we see him, we're like, are these guys hanging in there still? Yolanda and these guys and her team showing up, like, it was, it was brutal. It was brutal. Last week, I turned on like the Today Show, and the very first report they did was the national shortage of bus drivers. And I believe it was, it was in Kentucky, like central Kentucky. There was like five major school districts canceled school the first four days because they didn't have transportation the first four days. So the fact that we're trying to be out of the box and come up with areas, areas of operation is, I think, outstanding. So thank you.
I think one thing that'll be a positive is having the support from the schools and on the behavioral issues. That was from last year. I'm very hopeful that this year that that is in a positive direction.
Yeah, when, one of your bullet points was the building administration jumping on the bus, and did that happen last year, or is that new this year?
That's new this year.
Excellent.
Nicole, this is appropriate time to bring up the Briarly Creek issue.
Sure.
Okay. We have a, kind of a small subdivision near my house off of West Fork on Briarly Creek. We've gotten several emails. I know that area well because my best friend's dad was born in Briarly Manor, the big old house at the corner of Gaines and, and Briarly Creek, and owned all that property. And I used to fish in that lake. We're Pondview overlooks, so I know the area well, and it's extremely hilly. When we would fish there, it was extremely hard to get down to the lake. There's two lakes, ponds, if you want to call them ponds, that's fine. But anyway, I'm very concerned. I drove that on Saturday, and I counted twenty-five houses from Briarly Creek Road to the end of Briarly Ridge Drive. And it's approximately point three five miles. I know it's under the two, or the half-mile mandate, but it's extremely hilly and long. And there's some, like at the bottom of the hill, there's a big grassy foyer before you get to the first house. So it's an awful walk. And it's my opinion that we should make an exception here and, and put a second stop, move it from down at the bottom to maybe where the L is, or up to the corner where Briarly Ridge Drive and Pondview Courts are. And just for safety reasons, it's, it's just an awful long walk, and it's a, a hilly. It's probably the second biggest hill in our district next to Springdale Hill.
Yeah. I, I mean, I, I have driven it myself. I don't, I'm not a professional, so I don't know the stops or the timing of getting a bus to the school. But I would agree that I, I think there should be one stop in the neighborhood. That's just my opinion.
I drove, I drove it today, and I didn't realize you had to, when you come down Gaines, that they don't stop. So I almost lost my life right there. But as I went up into the neighborhood, and again, I'm not a professional, I don't do what you guys do every day. It seems like if, what, me, I worry because I'm, I'm like, I don't want to slide down that hill in the winter. So hopefully, I, I don't know if that's green township or if that's Colrain Township. Hopefully, they clear that. But in a situation, I guess this is more of a question. So if the kids have to walk from the cul-de-sac all the way to the very far end, and, I mean, I, I pride myself in cleaning sidewalks for the students that got to walk through my neighborhood. But if they don't, I mean, that's a, that's a treacherous walk to get down to the bottom. And then I could almost see if the elementary kids have to have somebody there with them, then we would have a, a group of cars that are built up down at the bottom, which could be an issue. And then I believe on Briarly Creek, isn't that right, isn't there a turn right there similar to the one you just showed that you corrected? I don't, I... Yes. I'm concerned about the safety there as well, to be.
So we've been looking at this. We've all driven that area, and Transportation has looked at it, and it meets the half-mile. And the stop as is, and Yolanda and Brian and Tanya can jump in, at the bottom of the hill allows for the bus to pick up on the residential side, so the students are gathered at the bottom of that hill. It is a steep hill, but they're gathered there. Going up into the community requires the bus to do a three-point turnaround, which means they're backing up. And it not only moves that bus, but all other buses that go into that subdivision now go up there. And so we are, we've looked at that, we've looked at the mileage, we've looked at the different parts of the law around safety, and we've primarily left it at the bottom of the hill. I mean, it's something we can continue to look at, but it's, it meets all the requirements at that point of safety at the bottom of the hill more than it does at the top because of that three-point turnaround. And Yolanda, you can jump in if there's more that I misspoke.
You said, as well as, along with the three-point turnaround, it increases the danger of accidents. Anytime you back up, the danger is increased as well as the...
In the winter, if that bus is coming down the hill and they haven't cleared it well, that could create an accident if that bus continues to go down towards Briarly Creek. Across the driveway or across the street is a guard rail. The bus could take the rail out, and then it's a creek. I would feel safer for the kids being on a flat level versus coming down that hill, and it opposes an accident with a bus full of kids. So we have to look into all of those issues as well.
Has there been any incidents in the past four or five years that we've driven up there with our buses that you were aware of?
I don't, I don't think so, but you can never say what the weather's going to do.
Sure.
I actually did drive the route last year, one of the schools, and for a driver that was out for about a week. And there was one day where we had, it was actually in the afternoon where we had the snow come about bus time, you know, about ride time. So it's a little scary, because I'm a, I'm a driver. And our biggest fear really is, A, backing up. We, we prefer in the whole entire district, we could never have to back up a bus because for every child that's killed inside of a bus, there's fifteen killed outside of a bus. That's, that is the statistic. And I don't want to be one of them. I don't want any of my drivers, I don't want anybody to ever face that. But coming down that hill in the afternoon when you're out running, and there is a creek over there, and that, that's scary. You're in a twenty-six thousand pound vehicle. There's nothing you can do once that thing starts to go, it's going.
And that is one that we spent a lot of extra time doing our due diligence on. We actually collaborated with the Ohio Department of Education's Transportation Office, looking at all the factors to just kind of make sure there was another set of eyes outside of just our department on that stop, on what the best way to be, to kind of around that one specific stop, just because there are a lot of factors at play with the hill and everything else.
Can I speak? I know it's not the public...
No.
So we've, we have looked at that, and I know we have some community people who, who want to speak about that. As we get past community comments, you know, we'll take their comments into consideration, and we'll continue to look at it, but that's kind of where we are right now.
Yeah. I would just ask that we continue to look into it from a, the standpoint of students having to, I, I know that they're the parent's responsibility until the bus takes them, but just from a parent's perspective, if, if my son had to walk all the way down there, even if I had to drive him down, just the, just the safety concern of having multiple cars piled up, and it just, I, I agree, the bus, you know, same thing, you don't think about the buses coming down the hill and, and the weather and that. But if there's, if there's any way to continue to look through that one, it is a very long distance from the, the back end of their neighborhood.
And as Tanya mentioned, the drivers are continuing to drive the routes every day, and we're in a phase in right now where we have, you know, half the kids today, half the kids tomorrow, by Wednesday, and later this week, all the kids will be on the bus. So as the drivers continue to drive the routes and get familiar with it, they'll continue to collaborate with Transportation about any updates that might need to be made, and that is one that we're keeping our eye on.
Okay. I appreciate that.
So Brian, when you drove that, is it, do you pass Pondview and then back onto Pondview and then go back down? Is that how you do the three-point?
Yeah. And make a legal turnaround.
It would be nice if when they consider building a neighborhood that they think about. You know, I didn't really think about that till today when I was back there. I'm like, why don't we make the cul-de-sac a little larger and just the bus could, something a little bit different.
Could the bus turn around in the circle at the end of?
It's still have to do it. You still have to back up.
Yeah.
Still, the three, three-four.
Yeah, it's, I mean, I've had trouble going up Gaines Road up to West Fork when it's snowy, and so I know what that can be, and I'm not in a twenty-six thousand pound vehicle. But it just seemed like an awful long drive. And, and I've been up there before, but for a five-year-old to walk that, I don't know, it just doesn't leave a good taste in my mouth, I thought of that. And I suspect if we don't do anything now, nothing will ever change.
As I said, we'll continue to look into it. I know we are going to hear from some people tonight, and their voice matters, and we want to hear that, and then we'll continue to talk. But it's on our radar to continue to look at.
Well, thank you, guys. Really appreciate you coming. We'll cut that portion out and be sharing that as, to as many people as I possibly can, just so you know. Thank you. And share your song, too, I'll be... Matt?
So with it being a first day back to school, I don't have any report, but I am looking forward to having great things to share from our students in the coming year. Thank you.
Thank you. Butler Tech?
Yeah, just one thing, obviously, with first day of school, we can't have any, anybody here to tell us what's going on in the, in the classes for Butler Tech. But we did sign the agreement with Miami University and Hamilton. So for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, they're going to be having machining, welding, and I T. that will take in another hundred and fifty students. And the same thing with the aviation, another hundred and fifty students will be available, so it's three hundred students, because we turned away about fifteen hundred students, you know, that wanted to get into Butler Tech. So we're, we're trying to make headway and get everybody that wants to get into Butler Tech and take a particular program. This is a first start, you know, that, that we're going to have another three hundred students that will be able to get into our programs. And other than that, that's it.
Thank you. Legislative update? Employee organizations, okay.
That's fine.
Community comments. So just a reminder that while the board meeting is a public forum, or public meeting, it's not public forum, so the board cannot respond to the comments in the meeting. But each person is given three minutes to speak. And first is Abby Matthews. Sorry, your paper was on top.
I think it was in the first, someone picked it up first. Okay. Hi, my name is Abby Matthews, and we live in the cul-de-sac of Pondview Court. We have three kids, Madeline in seventh grade, Nathan in sixth grade, and Ellison in fourth grade. Coming from a household of two full-time working parents, we utilize the bus services every day. The bus has always been at the bottom, the bus stop has always been at the bottom of Pondview Court for the past eight years that our oldest has started school. This year, we received their bus passes saying the stop had been moved to the entrance of the neighborhood at Briarly Ridge and Briarly Court, or Briarly Creek. According to Ohio law, which we've gone over this, school bus stop locations shall provide the maximum safety of pupils, given the distance from residence, traffic, volume, physical characteristics, visibility, and weather conditions. Out of this description, the new bus stop does not appear to consider four out of the five qualifications. This falls just within the five mil, point five mile, this falls just within the point five mile maximum distance to walk from our house. However, if my kids are to remain on the sidewalk, not cross the street, and walk around the perimeter of the neighborhood, it actually comes out to point six miles. Our kids will also have to walk up and down hills with a grade of a hundred and twenty feet, which is approximately twelve stories from the bottom of the street to our house, all while carrying backpacks half their weight. I challenge each of you to walk this with heavy backpacks twice a day. The bus stop itself is on a blind curve at the entrance with minimal sidewalk room, no place to park for parents that will now have to drive to the bus stop. We also are all familiar with Ohio weather creating slick walking conditions on the hills. We received an email saying that you maximize routes and decreased from seventy-three to fifty-eight routes, which you talked about. This tells me that since you have made so many cuts, that you can, can continue to take the two to three minutes to drive the neighborhood and keep our kids safe. I ask for your help to protect, protect my children, your students, and move the bus stop back to the po, bottom of Pondview Court. This would maintain safety. As a school district, I would hope you would not just meet the bare minimum of standards, but strive to surpass them and make safety a priority. As stated in an email from Chris McKee from two thousand and eighteen, when this was already attempted, quote, "I drove out and visited the area, and agree it is not a good stop." And he put in parentheses acknowledging that this, I'll read what he said, "Even though the area," I'm sorry, "even though the bus depicted in the picture was not following their route sheet and was not to be crossing students." In this, he acknowledges that the bus was supposed to be going on the same side of the street and still said that it was not a safe spot. I have notified," then he said, "I've notified the Transportation Department, and they have created two new stops in lieu of this one." So he already acknowledged that it was unsafe route and stop. And to Mr. Gilbert's point, he said they've driven over a million miles and have not had many accidents, minus hitting mailboxes. So to the snow point, I can acknowledge that, yes, that is a safety risk, but perhaps maybe on snow days, we could come to an agreement that the bus would, we would not get busing that day. But for the rest of the days when it is in safe driving conditions, that the bus should run, as it always has from the past eight years, that at least my child has been going. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Members of the board, thank you for your service to our community and the Northwest Local School Department.
Local School District. My name is Jonathan Kissel, and I live at 6023 Pond View Court in the Briarly Ridge Estates Subdivision in Greentownship. I'm a lifelong resident of Greentownship, a lifelong resident of Northwest Local School District, and I've worked my entire career in Corrine Township. I'm a proud product of Monfort Heights Elementary for preschool and kindergarten, St. Ignatius Elementary, LaSalle High School. My wife and I have three young kids at St. Ignatius, they're in fifth grade, second grade, and kindergarten, well, at least in a week and a half they will be. Earlier this month, our subdivision received bus passes for the school year. In our subdivision, there's a bus for St. James and a bus for St. Ignatius, for a total of about 18 children. Since the inception of our neighborhood in the mid-2000s, the bus stops have always been within the subdivision. For my house on Pond View, we have always walked about point one to point two miles to the corner of Pond View and Briarly Ridge. This year, however, the bus stop was moved to the front entrance of the subdivision at Briarly Creek and Briarly Ridge, which is nearly point five miles from my doorstep in the Pond View cul-de-sac, if we allow our kids to cross the street. But again, as my neighbor has mentioned, if they walk around the perimeter, it is closer to point six miles. As mentioned in the previous presentation, there were one or two stops that are more than point two-five miles. My children are the ones who are, one of those one or two stops. I'm here today to appeal to the board to reconsider an adjusted location of the bus to its previous location from the past 15-plus years. As I understand, several members of this board, as you've mentioned, have visited our neighborhood to assess the matter, and we greatly appreciate your due diligence. I also heard that the St. James bus today came into the subdivision this morning and this afternoon, but that the bus stops are still listed at the entrance. Not sure what's going on there. A bus stop at the entrance of Briarly Creek and Briarly Ridge is unsafe and inappropriate. I would like to submit to the board an email exchange that our subdivision collectively sent to the board and to members of the Transportation Department authored by Marielle Schmidt, a St. James parent. These, this memo outlines at least six primary reasons to justify moving the bus stop to locations within the neighborhood, including blind spots on a curvy road, lack of adequate gathering space for the kids, and the extreme steep grade of the hills. I would also like to submit an email exchange from 2018 about this very same situation between Mr. McKee and myself. In his email, Mr. McKee states, I quote, "In regard to the bus stop at Briarly Creek and Briarly Ridge, I drove out and visited the area Friday afternoon and agree that it is not a good stop. I have notified the Transportation Department, and they have created two new stops in lieu of this new one." Close quote. I'm here for my kids, especially my, my five-year-old son Dominic. You had some pictures on your presentation, this is who's walking that half a mile from Pond View Court every day to get to the bus stop. Anyone who has walked Briarly Ridge knows and would attest that the steep hills and terrain are too extreme for my five-year-old son to walk. These children will climb the equivalent of 10 stories with backpacks just to get home after school. Would you want your five-year-old walking that long every day? Think about days like today, nearly 100 degrees of heat in the wintertime when the snow's coming down and the sidewalks haven't been cleared. My request to the board is simple, please do the right thing. We're not asking for anything that hasn't been in place for the past 15-plus years in our neighborhood. Our children are willing to walk a short distance to the bus stop, but we're not willing to compromise their safety. Please move our bus stop. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, John.
So, tonight for our consent items, we will start with our HR items.
Good evening, we seek your approval for the following: seven resignations, 20 initial appointments, seven change in status, and various supplemental items.
We have two donations, one from LaSalle High School donated and will be used for the business partner meetings, and there was also a donation from Myers donated for staff events. We have several vendor contracts for non-public schools, special education, nursing, and music.
Good evening, I'm asking again for another revision of the high school instructional fees. College Board came out with their AP exam fees, and they were a dollar higher than what you originally approved, so I'm just asking for that revision.
With that, the superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the adoption of the consent items as listed.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion or questions?
Amy?
Good evening, for our fiscal consent items tonight, I asked the board to approve and dispense with reading of the regular meeting minutes from August 7th. We also have our July financial report, which includes our all-funds balance of $99 million, as well as our general fund unreserved balance of $60.8 million. For the month of July, we received 29% of our revenue for the fiscal year at $29 million, and our expenditures are at 7%, or at 6.7%. Our weighted average return for our investments is up to 4.21. And our list of monthly bills, we have our routine monthly bills, as well as we have some Chromebook purchases, textbooks, district radios, some student and staff software as we gear up for the fiscal year, a cafeteria refrigerator, and some auxiliary and grant fund payments. And then finally, we have some then-and-now certifications for some prior fiscal year utility and purchase service expenditures. With that, I ask the board to approve the fiscal consent items as listed.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
So the then-and-als that came up, that was due to a carryover from fiscal year?
Those were due to invoices from last fiscal year that have not been paid yet.
Any other questions for Amy? Yes, it's five to zero. Thanks, Amy.
Thank you.
Alright, so, just want to reiterate what Transportation has already said around the hiring event. We do have another hiring event on Wednesday of this week, from 2:00 to 4:30 here at our main office. We are still looking for more drivers. We need to build our bank of subpools, so that when we do have drivers who are off, we have an adequate number of people who can come in and drive those routes. We do offer paid training, so if you don't have your CDL, no worries, we'll get you through that training with payment, we'll get that CDL. And then we actually do have, and it's not just like a regular casual sub where you only get paid when you show up, we have guaranteed subs that come every day, and so they're guaranteed a minimum number of hours to be there every day to cover the routes and pick up some of the extra things that might happen if we're fully staffed that day. So, we do encourage people to consider that as an option if they have time in their day and they're willing to come out and get their CDL and drive. We are in the process of opening, so today we had our staggered opening with our freshman-only first day at the high school, our sixth grade at the middle school, and our grades one, three, and five at the elementary. We continue our phase in tomorrow with the other half of elementary, our seventh and eighth graders, and then our high schools are full bore. Today was an exciting day, it's always exciting and hopeful in the beginning of the school. Kids are coming in with their bags, they're excited, it's the first day, they're bringing their, you know, their Kleenex boxes, so it's a great day. And I want to give special thanks to our Corrine Township Fire and EMS. Our police and fire were actually at all of our elementary schools this morning, welcoming kids, encouraging them, giving them high fives, shaking hands, so we had them at PRE, Taylor, Corrine L., and Struble. So we appreciate that their presence was there to really get our kids off and running on a, a good start.
Did you spray them off?
Well, that brings me to my next topic, thank you for the segue, Mr. Gilbert. The extreme heat. The extreme heat. We do have this week temperatures that are projected to go up close to 100, if not over 100, if you look at the actual heat index on the real field. So, we are sending out information to all of our families with some general information to just make sure that students are bringing a water bottle, staying hydrated, wearing appropriate clothing, sunscreen, different things like that, but also that on Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, when it gets extreme, we will not be sending kids outside for recess, we'll be keeping them inside because of that. And then just something that we're looking at is we do have three buildings that are not adequately air-conditioned, so Houston Early Learning Center, Corrine L., and Corrine Middle are, they have the window units, and so those in these kinds of temperatures can struggle to keep up. And so, we, as a district, have instructed our buildings to leave their window units on 24 hours a day, pulling the shades down to make sure that we keep some of that ambient heat out, and closing the doors to make sure that the rooms stay cool. We will be continuing to monitor the temperatures in those buildings to see if those strategies are keeping it at an adequate level. If not, if it gets to an unhealthy level, we may have to look at alternate options for those three buildings for the end of the week, which would be possible calamity days, if we cannot keep them adequately cooled with the resources that we have. So that's something that we're continuing to monitor, and we will keep our community updated about and notify as early as possible if a decision like that has to be made.
What about starting school after Labor Day? Has anybody ever thought of that?
So, the start times for schools have typically moved into August, because we do have hot days in June, but we also are trying to maximize our instructional calendar, so that we can prepare kids, because state assessments are typically in March, April, and May, so we're trying to maximize that instructional time prior to those state assessments, so they can be adequately prepared for them.
I would challenge people that it's hotter in August than it is in June here in Cincinnati. I just, I just think you would alleviate all this problem, starting school after September 1st, after Labor Day.
My son played outside from 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM from June 8th through yesterday. He can make it Thursday and Friday, I think we're good. He'll be fine in the little heat.
So, that's all I have right now.
He played outside all summer, he never complained. He can survive two days in a warm classroom.
So with the three schools that you mentioned, with Houston Early Learning and Corrine L. and Corrine Middle, what about communicating to the parents, basically what you just told us?
That's going out this evening. If it hasn't already, if it hasn't already gone out.
Okay.
Yeah, it was going out tonight, so that they were...
Great, okay. Yeah.
That's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. Board member comments? Matt, Chris?
Nothing.
Jim?
I just want to wish everybody a happy beginning of the year, and thanks to Transportation for your presentation. I think a lot of people just take it for granted, oh, we're getting the bus, let's not have to go through what you guys have to do, and through the different subdivisions and hilly roads, and there's a lot more than just jumping on the bus and getting us to school, so appreciate that information. Amy and Darrell, thanks for your presentation also. Other than that, that's it.
Yeah, again, thank you to Transportation for your presentation, thank you to the parents for coming and speaking your concerns this evening. Back to school, looking forward to a great year with the students, and safety with our athletics, and all that, thank you.
We appreciate you guys coming this evening. Yolanda drove my daughter to school, and I actually, I think you had my son, too. So, no? So you guys, there's a lot of years and experience sitting there, so we, we really appreciate you guys, and please let your staff know that we appreciate them as well. We appreciate the community coming, this is open forum for you to come and share your concerns, and we'll be following up with you on that. I've heard good stuff, like, everybody says there's just a different field of the school year, which I'm praying that that plays out exactly the way, you know, the, this thing is vibing this year. It's always exciting this time of year, just to see what, what's going to happen, and I'm really glad to see that we're getting some support with you guys on the buses at the building level. Not that they didn't support, but we got a new initiative, I like to see that. Hopefully this year goes a little bit smoother from the discipline side, and we'll certainly obviously be keeping an eye on that, and if you need our help or anything, don't hesitate to let us know.
I appreciate the presentation for the budget, I'm excited to dig into that and the transportation. Thank you, guys, I'm very hopeful, and just pray that you guys can do your regular day jobs and maybe take a breath and a break from doing double duty, but appreciate you. And just, I heard today was a great day, my son said it was wonderful, and he was glad to be back, so it's exciting to, to see the little ones and how excited they get about seeing their friends they don't see for, for three months, so just thank you to all the staff, and looking forward to a great year. And thank you, guys, from the community, for coming to speak as well.
So we will move into executive session to consider employment or discipline of a public employee. Superintendent recommends the board approve the motion to move into executive session as listed.
So moved.
Second.
So we will break for executive session, just a reminder that when we return, no further business will be discussed. Thank you.